Okay, it's seven o'clock. I'd like to start the meeting and call it to order. Please rise for the pledge.
My pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right, roll call. Just note that Dave and Ron are absent tonight. Hold business. Item number one is approval of minutes. The regular meeting minutes of November 4th, 2021 were provided for review. I need a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of November 4th, 2021, as presented.
The move.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Mr. Wheeler?
Yes.
Mr. Brunkard?
Yes.
Mr. Stanica?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Mr. Garby?
Yes.
Motion passed. Audience participation. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to address the council on an item that is not on the agenda? And there are not. So presentations. Tonight we'll have a briefing from Representative David French. Evening, Dave.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council, City of Lansing staff. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. I am David French, in case you don't know who I am. I am the state representative for the 40th district, which includes all the city of Lansing and about the southern half of the city of Leavenworth and Delaware One and Delaware Two. It's a pleasure to finally be with you all tonight. My plan was to be with you all in September. Overcome by events, it's now just almost time to go back to work. So I'm sorry I wasn't able to get here in September, but I had a planned vacation that I had to make. Then I came back and had COVID with pneumonia, and so I basically lost all of October. And then I got on the Leavenworth Veterans Day Parade Committee, and we got involved in that, and so I missed the last meeting. So I apologize for getting here so late in the year, but at least now I'm here and we can go ahead and have discussions as you would like. I left copies, I don't know if you got them or not, of the 2021 legislative highlights. Did everybody get a copy of this? I left it with the city manager. Okay, I have extra copies. If you didn't get one, see me after the meeting and I'll get you one. If you have any questions about those, we could probably spend the rest of the evening talking about those, but I'd rather have you develop your questions, get with the city manager, and let him know what you want me to answer, and I'll answer them to the best of my ability. I return to the legislature for the fourth year. Next year, we meet in January for the session. As you may have heard, we're going back for a special session next Monday to discuss the Biden administration's vaccine mandates. There's going to be several bills that we're going to be looking at. I have no idea if we're going to pass, and if they do pass, whether the governor will veto them. I appreciate any input that you might have of your constituents' issues with that mandate. I know we have lots of people that are suffering right now, facing loss of jobs or taking the vaccine. So anything that you have that I haven't already heard, I would appreciate getting that before Monday so that I can possibly use that in my work there. I can tell you a little bit what's going on next year. I know the biggest thing is right now, of course, is the government mandates. People are not happy with those. They're going to be a high priority on the legislature's agenda. Whatever we do next week will probably just be a prelude to additional bills being looked at during regular session. People are still unhappy about property taxes, as you well know. I'm sure you get as many emails as I do about them. We did pass a more transparent bill last year to help at least let people know what they're paying and where it's going. But you just got your tax bill, and I just got mine too, and they're still going up. And that hurts people, especially the people that are on fixed incomes. We've had, in the last three years, a 25% increase in our property taxes. And that's a lot for a family with no, really not a whole lot of cost of living increases. Another big issue that's going to come up real early is the schools and the curriculums. Whether you agree or not, it's a big issue in the State House. The introduction of curriculum with racism and pornography involved is not acceptable, and it will be addressed by the legislature this year. We've got to increase the pay for state employees. Last two years, there have been no increases, cost of living increases, for state employees. There was supposed to be a 2.5% each of the last two years. Last year, you know, of course, 2020, the legislature had to close down early, so we never got to that pay raise. And this year, it was dropped out of the budget. So we've had people now for two years with no cost of living increases, and with the increase in inflation that we now see coming up, there has to be some kind of an increase in their pay. Particularly the judicial system and the correction system. Those are key members of our state. Trying to replace lost members of those two organizations is difficult, requires a lot of training and experience. So we're going to have to relook at increasing the pay for both of those. We increased the pay last year for judges and the judicial staff. It's still way below the outside market. And I'm sure you've heard of the incident at LCF just a couple of weeks ago, where the correction officer was badly hurt because of a lack of staffing. So we have a major issue with staffing in the correction system, and that's got to be corrected. We've got to be able to retain our correction officers, be able to hire new ones. And the last thing I'd like to leave with you, in case you haven't heard. Two years ago, we got the new prison down at LCF, the new prison facilities put in by the contractor, and we shut down the LCF East site. KDOC was looking at maybe just tearing all those buildings down or leaving them to fall down. Some of those buildings do need, have been condemned and should not be reused, probably do need to be torn down. But there are a couple of buildings up there still usable, and I had a big part in asking the KDOC secretary to think about putting something back up there if there was a need for it. And they found a need. They're going to put those inmates with substance abuse issues in that facility. 240-bed facility up there. It's the old W building up there. It's still a pretty good building. It's going to take a little bit of money to revab it, refab it, make sure it's okay for the inmates. But that's 240 more beds up there, and it's going to require additional staff, of course, and more business for Lansing. So I'm really glad that we're able to bring stuff back up into that facility. It'll help us maybe draw additional elements of KDOC, put more stuff up there later on. So we want to keep that as an option for KDOC, and that's the goal that I'm working on right now. I'm on the Corrections Committee in the House, and I spend a lot of time with the warden down there and the staff down there, trying to make it the best environment that we can for not only the inmates, but also for the staff down there. Mr. Mayor, if you have no other questions, I'm going to open it up for additional questions.
Do we have any questions from the council?
Yes, I do. You said something about pornography in schools.
Yes.
Can you clarify that? I was a principal of the middle school in Lansing for 30 years. I don't recall ever there being pornography as part of our curriculum.
I didn't say it was in Lansing.
Okay.
It was discovered down in Johnson County. There were five books in the library that were deemed to be pornography in the children's section.
This a grade school, middle school, high school?
I think it was a grade school. But that's where we're finding more and more school libraries need to be looked at. What's going into those libraries, making sure it's appropriate for the age groups that are there.
You do understand that in most school districts, they have a committee?
Yes.
That you, they put in place. I know in Lansing, they would put a committee in place.
Right.
Read the book, look it over, and then make that decision.
Which makes you wonder how these books got in the library.
Well, they could come into the library, but I'm saying if somebody has an issue with them, there's a process that you go through. That's, I didn't know if you were aware of that or not.
I know the process, and I think that's one reason why these were discovered. Any other questions?
What's the state looking at doing with the bill that the president just passed? Are we looking to capitalize on those dollars as much as we can for infrastructure projects?
Good question. I hope that some of that trickles down here to Lansing. I don't know if you just saw, but we have dropped from third in the nation with our infrastructure, our roads, our bridges, to seventh. So there is definitely a need for us to provide more money for infrastructure in this state. So let's hope some of that gets down here, down here to Lansing.
How is that decided upon? I have no idea.
The federal money coming in, it goes to a special committee run by the governor. And she, with the assistance of her administration and some legislative staff, decide where that money will go. It's pretty much the governor decides where it needs to go.
Could it be for new? I mean, are we talking about fixing existing? Or when they say?
I don't think there's any.
Or could you actually put that?
Any limits on how the money is spent, as long as it's spent on infrastructure? It could be just repairs. It could be brand-new roads. Again, I don't know that much about it. I don't think anybody really knows what's in that thing. So we won't know until we get.
Thank you.
Sure. Any other questions?
I'll ask you one.
Sure.
It was tied to the education bill or whatever you guys are looking at.
Yep.
You said racism. I know CRT is a big.
Right.
Issue. So, I mean, I would just ask, anybody up there voting on CRT or against CRT, actually know what CRT means as a theory and what it is? I mean, I've seen several politicians running around, getting dimed out by people asking questions. They don't really know what it even stands for, but they're against it. They know they're against it, they're just not sure what it is. So just being informed.
I can tell you, Mr. Mayor, that I do know what it is, and we don't want it in our schools.
Yeah. I mean, that's fine.
What is your definition, Representative French?
It's a matter of choosing the oppressed and the oppressor, and identifying each by race. As being taught in our schools, it's either you're an oppressor or you're the oppressed.
You do realize CRT is not a part of curriculum, state or locally?
I understand. But do you know also that the National Teachers Union has said they want to put it in all 50 states and all school districts? So it's coming. If it's not here now, it's coming. We're going to have to head it off. It's here. We found it in Lansing.
Explain it for me, please.
Sure. The superintendent at Lansing actually said, no, we have no CRT in our schools. We will never have CRT in our schools. And yet we found a book that the school board had ordered, that he approved, that was in the middle school, that was for a social justice class.
No, it's a social justice.
Social club. It was still paid for by the city of Lansing.
By the school district.
By the school district. And it was full of that kind of information that we're talking about. If you haven't seen the book, you ought to read it.
I have seen the book.
Okay. Do you agree it is inappropriate?
I don't think it's inappropriate.
Okay. Well, then we'll just have to disagree on that, because I think it's totally inappropriate.
Yes, we will. We'll have to just.
Okay, that's fine.
Which is, you know, that's the greatness of being an American, is you can do that.
It is.
Yes. But I was just putting that out to make sure everybody's informed, you know, who's going to vote on it. I mean, because there's a lot of misinformation on CRT.
I guarantee you, there'll be a lot of discussion next year in the House and in the Senate on that subject. And I guarantee you, everybody that votes on it is going to understand what we're voting against or what we're voting for.
Okay.
It's the way it works. It's the way it works. And I really appreciate all of you to take the effort to be on this council. As a fellow elected official, it's not easy to come and do this kind of work. And especially for the pay that we don't get. I know you get nothing almost, and I get close to nothing. So it's a real sacrifice that you all make to be part of running this city, and I really appreciate it. I try to stay out of your business as much as possible. I have enough trouble at the state trying to keep the state right. So I have no desire to get down into your business, but I do want to work with you. And we need to work together for the city of Lansing. We have the same constituents. We need to make the city of Lansing the best place to live possible within our ability. And I think you guys overall do a great job, and I'm very happy to be a citizen of Lansing. That's all I have.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Okay. Thank you very much. So the next up is a briefing by our library director on the Lansing Community Library update.
Gary.
Hello there.
Ms. Terry.
I am here to give you guys the highlights of what we've been doing over the last year and give you a preview of what we're hoping to accomplish next year. So, um, I forgot. There we go. So just as a reminder, this mission and vision of our library is to facilitate lifelong learning, foster creativity, and to promote community engagement. Our vision is that we promote the right of all citizens to have free access to information, technology, and resources. Our city, our advisory board a few years ago revamped our mission and vision statement, and it was based off of the American Library Association's Bill of Rights and our Code of Ethics that our profession adheres to. So, um, over the last year, we, these are our new, well, almost a year and a half, these are ours. It seems to work really well. We are able to offer services after work, Saturdays. That seemed to be right. I looked at our door counters and our circulation services, and 11 to 3 was about the time we had the most people in the library at the time. So, and we are still closed on Sundays. These services are, besides the books and the movies and everything people can check out, these are the services that we still provide. We provided these during the closure as well. We found ways to make this all work. So we were still notarizing things. We were still photocopying things, scanning. I was still proctoring exams. That was a little interesting to figure out, but we did it. We did provide computer assistance. We learned how to do that over the phone and through email and messaging. So the staff has learned a whole lot of new skills over the last year and a half. I did confirm that we still have our reciprocal borrowing agreement with Midcontinent Library over in Missouri, which is a huge benefit for the city of Lansing residents. It is the 10th largest library in the nation. So we have access to that as well as the state of Kansas library.
Is the notary service free?
Yes. As with all of our, we have notary services at, I think, every building. So, yeah, it's all free. This year, we were excited to be able to start Lansing Community Library, Imagination Library. We started that in May. We have 57 now. I registered the next one this morning. 57 children enrolled. It's a program that, from birth to five, the Dolly Parton Imagination Library Foundation sends out a book to every child in our city who is registered. We've had 13 graduate out of the program already. It means they were close, they were four years old when they were registered. We are partnering with the Lansing Kiwanis and the Friends of the Library to raise money for this program. And today, and actually today, that went up to $2,500 that we've raised. So nothing has come out of city budget to this point. So it has all been funded by private donations in our community.
What a cool program.
It is a great program.
What a cool program.
It is. It is. And the books are all personalized for this, for each age group. Dolly Parton writes a note, well, it's published that way, inside of it to the children of that age group, and she just does a great job of encouraging the kids along the way and gives really great tips to the parents as well to help encourage early literacy, so.
You can sign up for that online, right?
No.
You cannot.
I need to be able to verify their address. So to sign up online, we tried that for three days, and I spent a whole lot of time making phone calls and asking people to come in or send me verification. So it's just, they come in. But the nice thing about the program is we are partnering with the school district and our parents' teachers' groups and our preschool and our daycare through the school district. They know which students live within our city limits, and they give those to the parents to sign up, so.
So you guys are working with parents' teachers?
Mm-hmm.
They are great.
They are amazing, and they take the forms with them to all of their visits.
That's awesome, Terry.
So we're working on that. New way of doing business. Like I told you, we've been doing a whole lot of new skills. Through the process, we have, with our new website that Matt and the crew got for us, library cards are now online. Even when you walk into the library, we take you over to a computer. You fill it out, and it gets sent to us, and we just put it right in. That way, people can apply online when they're at home. And within the next business day, they have their library card information. They have 60 days to pick up their card to give us verification of where they live. But immediately, they have access to all of our online resources. And then when they come in to pick up the card, they are able to check anything out at the library as well.
I think it's nice that you let them know their card's expiring. We got one the other day.
I get a lot of emails saying, can you please renew my card? Yes, of course, we can do that.
That's just one of the things most people wouldn't, I wouldn't have thought about. Fill out the email. It's like, oh, pardon.
Yeah. And we do that annually, just because we have such a high turnover in our community. It's just a nice way to clean up our database and keep it fresh. The other thing that we were able to do during the closures, we did do curbside service. We got so many positive comments about it, not just because, you know, we were closed and they couldn't come in, but it has helped people who have sleepy kids in the back on their way back from the grocery store, people who, for whatever reason, are uncomfortable coming in, or they just want to swing by real quick. So we have a nice little sign on our, outside of our building that says, "Curbside Pickup, Call This Number", and we run it out to them, so.
It's remained pretty steady.
What's up?
That's remained pretty steady.
Mm-hmm.
Curbside pickup.
Mm-hmm. Yep, that's going to be staying. So our self-checkout kiosk that we got last year, I asked my staff how many people they thought were using it. Oh, well, maybe 50 people a month. Or since the beginning of the year, we have had 3,993 items checked out on our self-checkout kiosk. We have had 2,300 returned, and we have had 1,700 people step up to it and use it to check things out since January. So our busiest days are Monday. We have over 500 uses on every single Monday throughout this year. So we've expanded our digital services. We have maintained, we used to have five checkouts on our hoopla. We increased it to 10 during the shutdown. We have maintained it at 10 since then. We've also added Canopy, which has great courses. And great courses. It also has a lot of good documentaries and that whole indie film. So anything you think of Smithsonian or History Channel, you can probably find on Canopy, which is a free service as well. We've also, oh, it's... I have the wrong presentation up here. Anyway, so we've expanded, we've learned how to record all of our programs. So if people can't come, we have them recorded. We put them up on our YouTube channel, and they're able to view of all of the activities that we've recorded, storytimes, adult programs, the school-age programs that we've done. We've had over 894 views of our videos this year. A lot of people use it for bedtime stories, and then they come in and pick up the activities. But we've been having a lot of fun countywide, working with all of the libraries for our programming. It made more sense if we were all recording or all doing Zoom meetings. Well, we might as well all just share and advertise for everybody instead of all of us trying to recreate the wheel and do the same program at seven different locations. So we're doing that. And the other thing that we added this year is the academy. So what the academy is... It's... Good. There we go. So the academy. It is a niche academy. These are all videos on how to use our resources. So with the Lansing Library Card, you get to sit down. How do I use Canopy? How do I use hoopla? How do I sign up? And it's closed. It's 10 o'clock at night. You want to, you have insomnia, you want to watch? Well, that tells you how to log in and get it all set up. But we also did that with the state library. With your state library card, all of the services that they offer, you can also go to our website to learn how to use them. And the other two areas, Google and social media, are very, they're common questions that we get. So there's some troubleshooting there that they can do. There we go. So just to break down, I know... So, just a breakdown, I know this was in your packet, so I'm not going to go in depth into it, but, we're not where we were before the pandemic, but we're definitely getting better. Our digital services, our, our digital checkouts, they, you know, they're not going to go back down, we're, we're just going to see that continuing to grow of all of our audiobooks, ebooks, movies, the Wi-Fi computer sessions, I, I think that that's, we're on, going in the right direction with recovery.
Yeah, is your digital checkout, is that included in your number of patron visits?
In the number of patron visits, no.
Oh, that's okay.
And that is not included in the number of items circulated, so.
The checkout would be plus that then.
The number of items circulated are the ones that actually physically walk out of our building.
Carrie, the number of Wi-Fi sessions?
Yes.
That is...
Crazy.
Yeah.
Yes, that's why we have benches outside of our building now, is because, so people no longer have to sit on the sidewalk to use our Wi-Fi.
Yeah, that's...
And those are just sessions of 15 minutes or more connected, that's not just walking by the building and you just happen to connect.
Right.
So.
Carrie, you know, to go back to what Jean, Jean and I are both looking at, if you do go back and count, you know, you're looking at items circulated, 2016, 2017, you got some high numbers there, 2020, obviously COVID hit, but, look at the low numbers of digital checkouts.
Exactly, it's, it's balancing out.
So, if we do go back and add, you're really, you are where you were, it's just, yeah, that's, that's kind of what.
It's balancing out.
Yet, you're actually better because what Carrie identified is your number of Wi-Fi sessions, computer sessions, the Wi-Fi sessions are up, but, if you start adding those numbers up based on what has more than tripled and quadrupled, I think you're actually better than, and the numbers won't show that because of all the digital.
The way it's all.
I consider a checkout, digital, the same thing to me, that's a patron visit, that's...
And the, and when I submit the state statistics, that's how it is counted, it's all put together.
Bottom line is, you guys are crazy busy, it's you.
We are, and it's a good thing that we have the self-checkout now because the staff are able to have one-on-one help sessions with our patrons as they walk in instead of being tied to the circulation desk. So, we have children who I, who come in and we're spending 10, 15, 20 minutes with them, trying to find them the right book and helping our, our adult patrons doing just the same thing. I finished the entire Baldauchi series, I, I want another author that, that is similar to that, so we're able to spend more time giving the one-on-one help with our patrons, so, we're pretty happy with that. So, any other questions there? So, the programming, we, we learned how to do different types of programming over this last year and a half. We do onsite and offsite. When we have larger crowds of more than 10, 15 people, we will hold it in the community center downstairs so we can spread out, so that's the onsite, offsite. We also give out a lot of kits and crafts, activities that they can do at home with their families, go on scavenger hunts, all kinds of literacy activities for that, and then we are doing online Zoom and recorded sessions. Just this last Monday, we had the extension office come in and we did a recorded session on the Medicare, and since it's open enrollment right now, what things you need to look for, who to, who to talk to for different types and what you need, so that's going to be going up onto our website and on our YouTube channel here in the next few days. So, but, you know, we've had over 182 and we've had over 3,500 people attend those programs. And the State Library, that's, those are some of the offerings that they have. I want, I didn't want to leave out because that is one of, that is a resource for our patrons, if we don't have it, if you can't find it on hoopla in the library or on Libby by Overdrive Cloud Library probably has it, so, I mean, everybody, most people have all four or five apps on their phones or on their tablets or computers to use that, so. So, our programming for the summer, I would say we are back to where we were. We had more books read this, this summer than we did in 2019. We've had, we've had just, we had more adults attending programs this summer than in 2019. The kids programs, we, we were a few hundred down, but, they, they're not the ones that can get themselves to the library, so, looking really well there. So, how do you know what's going on again? You know, our website, our social media, the emails that we send out through, through the website and the quarterly connection. And anytime you want to help out, we'd love to have you with the friends and help with our book sales and donation drop-offs and help out with any outreach programs that we do, so, that is all.
Any other questions?
Other questions? Oh, I did want to say, that was the slide that was missing that I put in this afternoon, our 2022 goals. So, we want to encourage, to continue growing our early literacy in our teen programs. Early literacy took a hit over the last year, but our teen program, we really want to get into the schools and, and encourage the middle schoolers and high schoolers to be involved in the library, not necessarily, well, in any way, in any way, to get them to come in and help out, maybe through tutoring, maybe through volunteering, maybe some art programs, you know, we're looking into some different ways to encourage the middle school and high schoolers to come in. And then, the other main goal that we have is that, you know, the, the bid that just went out to paint the interior of the municipal building and then re-carpet the library side, so, that's what we have planned, planned for 2022. Not that that's just a little, it's a pretty big thing, so, any other questions?
With the, with the increase of you putting stuff up on YouTube, has that cost increased for you in your budget?
No, YouTube is free.
Free for you, right?
Yep.
What is the next book drive?
The next book drive is Saturday from 10 to noon.
That's why he's here.
He's my, one of my board members. The next book drive is Saturday, November 20th, from 10 to noon, and just pull into the parking lot, go to the east side of the building, east side of the building, drop it off on the sidewalk and we'll take it in and sort it and get it ready for the book sale. And the book sale's next April, just if anybody wants to know.
Carrie.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
With all the options that you have, all these different places you can go, someone would be hard-pressed to say, I can't find something on whatever.
On anything, yeah.
Right.
And if we don't have access to it, I always take purchase suggestions, we can get it through interlibrary loan, it is the library outside of, our car catalog has 50 libraries in it, if we can't get it from one of the 50 libraries, we go statewide, if we can't get it statewide, we go nationwide.
That's why I say, libraries used to be, if they didn't have it in the building, you were out of luck.
Yep.
And now, if you don't have it in the building, there's all these other places.
And those are all free services as well.
No matter what you're looking for, you're going to find it.
It's all, yep, it's all available and it's all free.
Cool stuff, Carrie.
Thank you so much, and thank you guys for your support.
Thank you. Okay, new business, Fire District One Joint Board appointments. The city needs to appoint two council members along with the mayor to represent the City of Lansing and the Leavenworth County Fire District One Joint Board. Joint Board will meet to accept appointments to the Board of Trustees. Need a motion to appoint Mayor McNeil and two council members to the Leavenworth County Fire District One Joint Board.
Do we name those council members?
Yes.
You need to nominate them, yeah.
Well, I'll nominate Carrie and Don.
I have a motion and a second to nominate Councilman Carrie and Councilman Stenica.
Mr. Beeler?
Yes.
Mr. Brungart?
Yes.
Mr. Stenica?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Mr. Garby?
Yes.
Motion passed, congratulations.
Another meeting.
Item number five is Fire District One Board Trustees Appointment. There is one position on the board that will expire December 31st, 2021. This position was advertised and one application was received. Need a motion to appoint Andy Pulaski to the Leavenworth County Fire District Number One Board of Trustees for a term that will expire December 31st, 2025.
I'll move.
Have a motion and a second, call roll.
Wait, hold on.
Oh, well, we have a motion and a second, I'm sorry, any discussion, Mr. Kirby?
Thank you, mister, wow. I, I did talk to Andy just before coming up, and the reason she's not going to be here is because her daughter's coming into town, and she said, you, all, all you guys know me anyway, so, she just wanted to let it be known, but that's why she wasn't here.
Okay, well, thank you.
She wasn't. Well, she's waiting for her daughter to get here, that's part of life, that's all I needed to know.
Yeah, and she's a standing board member just reapplying to as well, so. So, we have a motion and a second and a note from Andy, please call and roll.
Mr. Beeler?
Yes.
Mr. Brungart?
Yes.
Mr. Stenica?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Mr. Garby?
Yes.
Okay, motion passed. Item number six is Ordinance Number 1073, Exclusion of Property Informational Item Only. This ordinance was previously reviewed and approved at the 7 October 2021 council meeting. It was determined at the time that the recorder, the recording that a small portion of the legal description had been omitted by the ordinance or from the ordinance. The legal description has been corrected and the ordinance will be published again and submitted for the record. Again, this is information item only, no action is required. Item number seven, Ordinance 1074 and Ordinance Number 1075, Lansing Town Center TDD and TIF District Terminations. Ordinance Number 1074 would terminate the TDD allowing for Lower Sales Tax on Any Developments That Seek to Build in the Future There. Ordinance 1075 will terminate the TIF District, which was originally put into place to provide redevelopment, however, no development has occurred and the TIF District was never accepted at the county level, so staff believes it may not exist at all today. Staff believes that the removal of these two districts will help future development in the area. So, I need a motion to approve and adopt Ordinance Number 1074 and Ordinance Number 1075.
Go move, second.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion on this?
Mr. Beeler?
Yes.
Mr. Brungart?
Yes.
Mr. Stenica?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Mr. Garby?
Yes.
Motion passed. Reports, city attorney.
Nothing to report, ma'am.
City administrator, Tim.
So, we've spoken a little bit, we have a little over $1.8 million in American Rescue Plan Funds. I know some of the priorities the council had laid out before, talked about improving internet and broadband access throughout Lansing, but one of the other items you guys have also talked about is improving infrastructure, water, sewer, those types of things, and especially projects that promote growth and development in Lansing. Since this has come up, we've had a few discussions and developers have reached out to us about, hey, if I do XYZ, is this something I could work with the city on for American Rescue Plan Funds? So, I wasn't sure if there's a couple of you guys who would want to be on some type of committee, because again, there are people who want to build things reaching out to us, asking if we can partner with them in building things. We've got $1.8 million of that, so, I mean, we've, we've got a little bit of flexibility on things. Obviously, when people have reached out to me and Matt, we don't want to tell them, sure we'll do, you know, $200,000 or something like that, we need to get council approval on stuff like that. And it's, it's challenging because when people ask me and Matt, we, we don't really know what to tell them. So, it would be nice if we had a couple of council members who wanted to, to be on a committee to talk about residential development and maybe how we can use ARP funds to, to spark some stuff.
All good.
I'll do that.
Okay.
You're okay?
Look at that, just like that.
Yeah, that was fantastic, so, thank you guys.
As long as you're buying dinner.
Yes.
Or breakfast. Well, I like breakfast better.
Will do. And then, I, I really have some unfortunate news, you guys may have heard, Judge Prey passed away a couple of days ago. I believe Frank Cole is going to be filling in, in his absence, and I think long-term, I think all of the cities in Leavenworth County will be looking for a new municipal court judge, so we'll coordinate with Mayor McNeil, but also the other communities in the county to, to kind of figure out a plan forward, so. But, yeah, he, he was a, he'll be a big loss for, for the entire area, so that was, that was too bad. And that's all I have.
All right, thanks, Tim. Any department heads? You already had your time, Carrie. Okay, proclamation, nothing, we'll go around the horn, so, starting with Greg.
So, Dave, thank you for coming and letting us know what's going on with the state, we appreciate it, it's good to hear about it firsthand instead of on the news after the fact. Carrie, thank you, the library's killing it, good for you. And, because of the library briefing, on this day in history, Mark Twain's short story, The Celebrated Jumping Frog of Calaveras County, was published in the New York Saturday Post. That's all I have, ma'am.
Quite enough, Carrie?
Carrie, your presentation was excellent, what good work you guys do, so, congratulations on that. Representative French, thank you for attending. We don't always agree, Tony made a good point, that's what makes America great, so, thank you for attending. And I'd like to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving, and I think we've all got a lot to be thankful for.
Absolutely. Thanks, Carrie. Don?
Same, kind of did it with me, you know, thanks, Mr. French, for coming today and giving us an update, and keep the lines of communication open, that's what makes it work. Carrie, as always, great job at the library, as always, and again, I want to wish everybody a very happy and safe Thanksgiving.
Thanks, Don. Jean?
I disagree with everything that's been said tonight, and, you know, and to the library, boards, president, is that what?
No.
No?
Just on the board.
Just on the board? Brave enough to show up tonight, though. All right, well, we appreciate all the volunteer work all the volunteers do, so, you know, takes care of me.
Just to clarify, Jean said that you just agree, not disagree with everything said tonight, you just agree.
Sounds like disagree.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that everybody knew what you said. Yeah, because you kind of said, Marcus?
Hey, thanks, Representative French, thanks for coming tonight, very great job, thanks for everything you're doing, and you're a great neighbor too, thank you very much. I'd like to also wish everybody a happy and safe Thanksgiving and safe Thanksgiving travel, and I'd like to thank our first responders again, Chief, thank you very much for all that you do, and our city staff, I hope you all enjoy your time off and your break for a little bit of a holiday, that's all I've got.
Thanks, Marcus. Jesse?
Now, the broken record continues. Thanks, David, for your presentation and for everything you do for us, representing us. Thanks, Terry, library's doing great things, appreciate your hard work over there, happy Thanksgiving to everybody, I hope you really enjoy your time with family and friends this year, because last year, I think a lot of us were still locked down and didn't get to enjoy ourselves, so, just be safe, that's the most important thing, but, really enjoy your quality time with family and friends. If that'll make a motion, we adjourn.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to adjourn, call or roll.
Mr. Beeler?
Yes.
Mr. Brungart?
Yes.
Mr. Stenica?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Mr. Garby?
No.
We are adjourned.
It does it long time.